will be directed to the standards. A staff report was circulated to people in the notice area. And those would be the standards that we're addressing today. I would like to make some disclosures. First, I have no interest in the outcome of this application. I am not related to, nor have I represented the applicant in this matter. And I have no interest in the outcome one way or the other. I've not had any ex parte contacts, which means I've not been contacted by anyone regarding the subject matter of the application, other than communication with staff, receiving the staff report, and then some communication regarding the request for continuance, which I understand will be coming today. With that, I believe that I can hear and decide this matter in an impartial manner. If there is anyone that has any objection to my hearing this matter today, please indicate so now. Okay, hearing none, I would, I think I will turn it over to Juan Olmeda, who will go through how the Zoom public hearing will be conducted. And then we will hear from staff, and then we will hear from the applicant. And then if there are any members of the public who received notice and are here today to present testimony or evidence regarding the application, there will be an opportunity for that as well. Thank you. Juan, I think you are muted if you are speaking right now.
Apologies, thank you. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thanks for joining us. For those of you, members of the public who are joining us today, when the time comes to provide public testimony, the instructions are on the screen right now. You'll have the ability to raise your hand. We will see those who have raised their hand to provide public testimony. And we will be calling on you in the order that hands are received. We will call on your name. We will ask for you to provide us your full name and your physical address for the record. We will then provide you the ability to unmute yourself. And then you can proceed with your comment or your public testimony. If you are joining us by phone, you can raise your hand by pressing the star key, followed by the number nine. And then, once we provide you the ability to unmute yourself, you can press the star key, followed by the number six. Again, if you're joining us by phone, star key, number nine, will raise your hand, and then star key, number six, will allow you to unmute when we call on you. Those are all the instructions that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olmeda. All right, I will now turn it over to staff for a presentation on the staff report.
Thank you, this is Sarah Anselman, City of Ben Associate Planner. It's my understanding that the applicant is going to request a continuation. So I submit a subsequent modification, so the project is likely to change. So I have foregone the presentation today since I believe they'd like to request that right away. So I'll mute myself again. And I'm not sure what the process is for requesting that, but I'll leave it up to you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will now hear from the applicant or their representative. Mr.
I'm here. Sorry about that, I was hitting the unmute on the wrong place. It's Chris Kobach on behalf of the applicant, good to see you again, hearings officer Marshall. That's right, the applicant's team, after receiving the thorough staff report, went through it, and as we worked through it, it became clear that there were going to be modifications necessary to the site plan to present a complete application that would allow you, or in our view, require you to approve it. And that's what we want, we don't want to delay with an appeal. And then we started analyzing the nature of some of the modifications. And my experience in this area with you has been that rather than submit some stuff today and have you in the position of saying, is this a modification or is it not? We elected to proceed under the assumption it will require a modification. We plan to submit an application to modify the site plan application. At this point, I do not believe we will be required to, and nor do we plan to submit a modification to the conditional use or the variance application. And we've been working on it already. The one issue that I think, so we're going to request a continuance under ORS 197763. We don't believe it's opposed, we haven't heard from the public, but staff has expressed in emails that they concur with that. We think it's wise for all parties to proceed with a hearing based upon the application as modified. And we think it will be, it will address the issues that staff raised, or at least most of them. We may have, we anticipate that we will be calling on you to decide one or two issues, but we're going to try to eliminate, to the extent we can, the issues. And so the issue is whether Ms. Berry suggested that we not set a hearing date. We've looked at that, we feel that there is enough information and enough work has been done so that we could set a new hearing date. Our thinking is we will have a complete modification application to the city by March 29. And we, you know, the application we have now is complete, it's been deemed complete. We looked at the nature of the modifications. We're very confident that our application for a modification will be fully complete on March 29, when submitted. And so from there, if staff could figure out kind of what the hearing notice they have to issue is, how much time they need to get that out, we feel we could work together to set a new hearing date, and we think that's important. We understand the 120-day period is continued due to the modification. But nonetheless, you know, we want to get this thing moving, and we'd appreciate the indulgence of staff to set a hearing date. So that's all we have for this morning.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Kobach. Anyone else on the applicant's team or the applicant who wish to testify, build on what Mr. Kobach has just stated? Oops. Okay, all right, hearing none. Mr. Olmeda, could you let me know if there are any hands from the public for people that have joined us that wish to provide any public testimony today?
We do have one.
Great.
We have Ken Attwell. And now, give me one minute. Ken, you should have now the ability to provide your testimony, please proceed.
Yes, I am land use chair for Southeast Bend. I never received any notice. We are across the parkway from this property. The person in charge of this review commented that in drawing 500 feet from the center of the properties, which is an incorrect way to do the measurement, you're trying to find out neighbors within 500 feet, so you should consider first the property line, not the center. Otherwise, large parcels could avoid talking to anybody. The refusal to let us have comment was based on 500 feet, and that did take the notice across the parkway, included less swab and a couple of vacant parcels, even the way she drew it. Again, I was told I could just join as a member of the public. Well, I am, and I'm saying, we were not given proper notice. I did not have time to prepare or comment and submit it to my board for approval. And I'd like a continuance. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Attwell. Great, I've got your comments. And I forgot to note at the beginning that these proceedings are being recorded, so they will be available for reference to anyone who wishes to go back in time and see what we said here today. All right, are there any other members of the public that are present that wish to provide testimony today?
Yes, next we have Kimberly Miller. Kimberly, you should now have the ability to unmute yourself. Please proceed with your comment.
Good morning. I have a question, as a landowner on Terrace Lane, when we look at the lot outlined on the map included in online, there's no indication of exactly what will be behind our homes? At what point, I was kind of hoping to get that out of this meeting. At what point will we be allowed to ask questions about exactly what to expect behind our own properties?
Thank you, Ms. Miller. I will continue with any other public testimony questions. And the applicant will then have an ability, if they so choose, to respond to any questions like yours that are raised. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that wish to provide testimony today?
I am not seeing any other hands at this time. Oh, one second, I see one more. Judy Clinton, you should now have the ability to unmute yourself. Please proceed with your testimony.
This is Judy Clinton, 1948 Six Pine Drive. I'm the Southwest Bend Neighborhood Association's Land Use Chair. I'd like to point out to the hearings officer that under the Murphy Crossing Refinement Plan, under C, Table C 2.7.820C, it lists the land use zones that are permitted under the Murphy Crossing Refinement Plan. The two zones that are of interest are ME and CG. And under those, there is no mention of either a permitted use or a conditional permitted use of an RV park or a vehicle storage, enclosed vehicle storage. So I would posit that this whole application is not allowed under the Murphy Crossing Refinement Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clinton, thank you very much. All right, are there any other members of the public that wish to provide testimony this morning?
I am not seeing any more hands at this time, Madam Hearing Officer.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I will turn things back over to the applicant if they wish to address any of the comments or questions presented this morning. And after that, we will discuss the continuance, excuse me, continuance date with staff. Mr. Kobach?
Thank you, hearings officer Marshall. The applicant does not have information to respond to the first comment, because I don't really know where that property is, but we'll, I wrote it down. We'll take a look at that and address that if necessary in our modification hearing. As to the second one, I think staff's already addressed that sufficiently in the report, and we have nothing further to say on that until the continued hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, okay. All right, there has been a request to continue the hearing, and a statement by the applicant that they will be submitting an application for modification of application, which Mr. Kobach has correctly noted will restart the 120-day review process clock. So my notes say that the applicant intends to, or expects to, submit a complete application for modification by March 29. And then there was a question as to, on the city side, on staff's side, obviously allowing for adequate notice, and of course, a modified staff report, as Ms. Anselman stated at the beginning of the hearing, to be prepared and circulated in advance of a new hearing date. So Ms. Anselman, do you have any comments on staff's side at this point? Or do we have sufficient information to pick a new date for continued hearing on a modified application?
Yeah, so notice, we require a 20-day notice to the public. And, you know, without knowing the scope of the modification and how much I'll have to rewrite, if we're going to choose a date today, I would request that we just pick something approximately 60 days out from March 29, without having, without knowing much, I need to rewrite, I need to give myself the maximum amount of time available. Which I pulled up the calendar, I could do a little bit less than 60 days potentially, looking at the week of May 17 or May 24. During that week, I have flexibility in my schedule, so either of those would work.
Okay, Mr. Kobach, looking at the dates, and I'm making a quick assumption that typically hearings are held on Tuesdays. If we're looking at potentially May 18 or May 25, which fortunately would be the day after the holiday. If we were to pick one of those dates, do you know at this moment, Mr. Kobach, if that would work for the applicant and his team?
Well, I could speak for myself, and that will be fine. I think our whole team is on this hearing. And for efficiency's sake, I would just throw it to them to tell us if there's a significant problem with May 18. And if not, I would say the applicant's position is we should do May 18.
Thank you.
I'm here, this is Larry Kine.
Hi Larry.
Hello there, how are you Stephanie, good to see you again.
Thank you.
We got a meeting like this, huh? So, you know, my thoughts are this, we anticipate, assuming staff is cooperative, that we're going to work very diligently in cooperation with them. So when the new modification of application comes out, it's not going to be a surprise to anybody. It's not going to be like, here it is, and, you know, surprise, surprise, you've got a bunch of work to do. I anticipate there'll be very, very, very limited work to go do on Sarah's part. There's going to be, just like Chris mentioned, two or three items probably that we just completely disagree on, and that you'll get an opportunity to decide, lucky you. And, but the rest of the items, we fully expect that we're going to, you know, come to grips on consensus for all these design items and all these things that are, you know, more objective, we hope to get to that. So we expect to have that done, you know, by May 29. I fully expect that we don't need 60 days, that it really probably should be the April 20th or 27th. This has been going on since August 28 last year, that's not very exponential in land use, which is required. And so I'd hate to go drag this on an extra month, just, you know, because. So I would request that we do it, you know, more like April 20 or April 27.
Okay. Ms. Anselman, do you have a response to Mr. Kine's comment and request?
I'm going to request later in May, because I have other applications to review that are also subject to 120-day timelines. So I need to be fair to those applicants as well, and issue their decisions in a timely matter. So it's not, I can't put in 100% of all of my time on just reviewing this application. I have to factor in my entire workload.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Anselman. Okay, so there are a lot of moving parts here, because we don't have the modification application in, and the subsequent steps that will need to be taken once that's received and reviewed by staff. So I think, you know, I hear the comments and the concerns regarding expeditious land use decisions. May 18 sounds like a date that will work both for Mr. Kobach and Ms. Anselman. And we will, and that's, obviously, that's based on the assumption that the modification application will be in on March 29. So I will go ahead and grant the request for continuance to May 18, that's a Tuesday. And the notice that will be sent out by the city regarding the continued public hearing date, if we're still doing Zoom, which I don't know, we may still be doing Zoom at that point, will include information as to how to attend the meeting. Am I correct, Mr. Olmeda and Ms. Anselman on that front?
Correct, it's 20-day notice. As far as I know, will still be virtual at least 20 days prior to that. I don't know that we'll have any changes. So if there are, they'll be noted in the notice. But as of today, I would assume it'll also be via Zoom.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, thank you for everyone for attending this morning. We're going to go ahead and close the hearing that was noticed for today, and continue the hearing to May 18, 2021. The time, I don't have the time, but I would, at this point, assume that it would also be at 9:00 a.m. And instructions for attending the meeting, most likely virtual, will be in the notice to be circulated to, excuse me, circulated by the city, not only to those folks in the notice area, but also to those that participated today, because you're now parties. So thank you, everyone, for attending. And if there are any other questions or comments, speak now.
Yes, Stephanie, this is Amy Berry with the City of Ben Planning Division. I just have one more question. So we've covered continuance, we have not noted whether or not we're stopping the 120-day clock today for the active application?
Oh, good point, that's a good point. No, we're not stopping that 120-day clock until there is a, because I don't think that we can until the modification application is in, because that's the tipping point as to when that clock is restarted. So excellent point, I'm really glad you brought that up. So the unmodified application is still live, and the clock still runs until that modification application is in, because that, like I just said, is the triggering point for the 120 days. Yes.
Like typically, when we have a request for continuance, we also ask that the applicant at least toll that clock during that timeframe, the date of the request of the continuance, to at least the date that they've requested to submit that modification application, because it's unclear at this point now, what happens if they don't submit the modification application? We have a continued hearing date that's way past the 120. Also, I'm not sure where we're at at the 120 clock right now, but I think we might be close to going over that if we continue this to the end of the month.
Thank you, excellent, excellent point. I will ask now, Mr. Kobach, on behalf of the applicant, will the applicant agree to continue, pause, toll, the 120-day clock from today's date, and at least until the date of submittal of a modified application?
Ms. Hearings Officer, in the ordinary course, I would step out in the hall with Mr. Kine, but I can't do that now. So unless Larry feels that he should chime in at this point on his own, he and I need to probably talk on our cell phones and get back to you in a second.
Sure.
I can chime in. What happens if we move the hearing to May 11, and then we'll just toll the clock? As a compromise for both parties.
So, okay, Mr. Kine, let me see if I understand your proposal. Toll the clock from today's date, so the 120-day clock would not be running from today through to May 11, which essentially doesn't add on to the clock, of course, but it essentially puts a pause for a almost two-month period. Is that what you're requesting?
Well, a little, I'm saying what we'd do is we'll toll the clock indefinitely if we could move the hearing to May 11, move it one week closer. I like to smile.
I'm just thinking how creative you are. I think I would have to ask staff if that works. I am sensitive to Ms. Anselman's comment, which is, you know, there are other applications, and there are other 120-day clocks that are running, and the other staff members that are here today. You know, there's a lot of moving parts on their end as well.
You know, being fair, like whatever, what we talked about, it also, to be fair, we've had ours in for a long, 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 long time. And, you know, there wasn't any communication with us when we got the staff report. I mean, we were under the interpretation, when it was going to come out, that we had one or two items, and those items, we expected with the roundabout and street improvements, like we've, you know, wrestled with before. But then we got, you know, kind of unbeknownst to us, all this other stuff. And so, you know, we're really going to work hard with them. That provides a lot of time, I would love to move this along quicker. So I'd love it if we have a cooperation in that. Sarah, Amy, what do you think?
This is Sarah. Again, without seeing how the scope of the submittal and how many findings I'll have to rewrite, it's really hard to judge. We also have to keep in mind that my staff report is due a week sooner than the hearing date, so it's one last week than the full-time period. So I would prefer to stick with the 18th. Also, tolling the clock, the time the clock needs to be paused is only until the modification application is submitted, because that restarts the 120-day clock anyway. So tolling it longer than the date of the modification application, I don't believe is necessary.
Well, if I could chime in, Sarah, we're only going to modify the site plan. So I think what Larry's saying is we would agree to toll all of them, because if we don't, then the only thing that's told by the modification is the site plan, and the other two will be running. And we create kind of a dual track for the 120-day period, and that's not easy for anybody to work with. So I think you should consider that as well, before you finalize your response, hopefully.
Let me just clarify, so the intent is not to, you would be pausing the clock on the conditional use permit and the variance indefinitely to allow the rescheduled hearing date, and basically just tolling the clock on the site plan long enough to submit the modification?
Well, I was responding to your comment that the modification automatically tolls it. So that only tolls one.
Correct, the site plan, that's a good point, I just want to make sure I'm following.
Yeah, Mr. Kine's compromise was, let's just move the hearing up one week, and we'll toll indefinitely the period on all three applications, so we have a consistent approach to everything. I think I understood that correctly, Larry, didn't I?
Yes, you did.
And that just takes a procedural issue away that we don't have to wrangle with. And maybe that does give you a little bit more time to get your staff report out in time for a May 11 hearing. And I'll just reiterate what Mr. Kine said is, the findings that you'll have to address are going to be the setbacks and the design aesthetics. We don't anticipate you rewriting anything on the major issue with the improvements or the dedications. Nothing's going to change on those, those are the issues that the hearings officer's going to have to make her decision on. But we anticipate- But we anticipate that, that those will be the only issues she has to make a decision on because we're going to work with you to address all of the design issues, all of the site plan issues, all of the setback issues. And, and we're confident that those issues are going to be resolved and your findings are going to be fairly easy to write, we hope.
Okay. All right, well, this procedural issue, it does sound like we don't want this to be a hang-up. And understanding that, that only one aspect, one application would be modified and the other two clocks would be running. I do, you know, we, we do need resolution on what the applicant will, will toll and to what extent. And it sounds like the applicant has proposed to, that they would agree to toll indefinitely the 120-day clock on all three applications, which sounds like they are conditioning that agreement on moving the hearing date to 5/11, May 11, which would be one week prior to the oral ruling that I made of May 18 as the new hearing date. I am going to request, and then, I'm sorry, that I've heard from staff that, you know, that there are some, you know, potential issues with moving that date up one week, not only pertaining to workload, but also having the time to circulate the staff report one week prior. And, and I think we're all proceeding under the assumption, hopefully, that the modified application will not be particularly, you know, causing an entire rewrite of the staff report on, on all the issues covered in the 100-page document. But I'm, I'm hesitant to say we'll go with, with 5/11, with May 11, without staff input that, that they would be able to do their job.
Yeah, this gives me five weeks to write the modification. I will potentially be out for a medical procedure for three days. I also have pre-application conferences during that time, which requires a substantial amount of staff preparation where I am not working on staff reports. I can, I can try for May 11th. If, I don't know if, you know, I look at the modification, if there's an opportunity to extend that if needed or if this becomes set in stone.
Hey, Sarah, this is Larry. You know, I really, really anticipate that we're going to work together and, and, you know, the issues of, because here's, here's my thing on what's going on here, is nobody's turned an application in, in the Murphy Road Refinement Plan. This is like the first one ever. And so everybody's kind of getting their hands wrapped around it. Well, now everybody's pretty much familiar with it. And I think we'll be able to move quickly with, you know, communications back and forth to get the design aspects of it kind of cleaned up. And like Chris said, the, the items of the, you know, the setbacks for the roundabouts and the street improvements and things like that, we're, we're not modifying that. We're, we're sticking to our guns on that one. So all of that portion's done. It's really going to be about, you know, the frontages and making sure we are calculating those the way you guys see it. What is required there for the design aspects of the buildings? And we're hoping that we get through that, you know, lickety-split. So in the event that we are, you know, not cooperating or not seeing eye to eye, I, I don't have a problem in backing it up another week. But I, I really, truly, honestly feel like we're going to be able to work through this and get to it to be, you know, and not have those be contentious. And you won't have a whole lot to do except say, meets the criteria, meets the criteria, meets the criteria.
You know, and I would just like to add, Sarah, this morning, we took out one issue off the table just through an email between you and I on those four buildings where we ended up doing it correctly in the first one. So like Larry said, I think we're going to be able to work through and tick off these little design and, and setback and, and orientation issues rather quickly. And I don't expect that you're going to spend a lot of time on revising the staff report. It's just confirming measurements and, and then addressing the more subjective stuff on the designs. But we're going to work very hard to address the, the design issues and the guidance that you've given us so far in the staff report.
If the application is more thorough than the last application, if I'm not required to make as many assumptions, a lot of that can be accomplished by an extremely thorough narrative that states how the standard is met. To supplement the plans, if it describes the details in the way that I would describe them in a finding, that can aid in me writing a faster decision. If your team can do that, I think I can do May 11th.
Thank you, Sarah. And, and we'll, we will do that. You, you've given us a good guideline and some of your thinking and some of our mistakes that we've made on there where it was unclear. We certainly see that better now. Sometimes you, you don't see it when you're producing your own work product on those types of things. So, and then we can also give it to you in a Word document that would, you know, help you to be able to utilize some of the burden of proof in your decision that might help quicken the pace.
I would appreciate that. Yes, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, great. And, and it does sound like the applicant and the city, at least communication-wise, you know, it's, it's always helpful to keep things moving along, which I believe is everyone's intent and desire. Okay, so the hearing, this hearing will be continued to May 11. And the continuance will be with respect to the conditional use permit and the, the variance. Technically, it's not a continuance of the site plan application because we're having a modified site plan application coming in by the end of this month. But for now, all three applications are continued. I would request that the applicant submit in writing that their, their agreement to toll the clock indefinitely on all three applications. The, the site plan modification, when that application comes in, automatically will restart the 120-day clock. But from today to whenever that application is in, that site plan application clock needs to be told. And then the other two agreement in writing that the clock will be told indefinitely. That way, it kind of keeps all three applications together. So we don't have competing clocks running and confusion on, on anybody's part. So with that, I'll go back to my earlier comments, which is that the notice will be sent out on the continued public hearing date of May 11, which will include Zoom information and time information and how to attend, everything that the notices typically include. And Ms. Anselman will prepare her staff report a week prior to circulate that, which will cover not only the, the non-modified aspects of the application, but the modified, modified aspects of the application as well. So I'm, I'm hopeful that staff and the applicant will continue working through these issues to keep things streamlined for when we reconvene on May 11th for the public hearing. Any other final questions or comments from anyone in attendance? All right. Now we will go ahead and close this public hearing. And I want to thank everybody for attending. And that's all for now.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.